Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Human Services Committee. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco, Commissioner Tomian, Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing, Commissioner Greitach.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here. Do we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, in justice, law, and mercy.
Okay, will there be any additions or deletions, changes to the agenda?
Make a motion that we accept the agenda as presented?
Uh, no, I'd like to make one if we could. We've got all of our guys, and I know it wasn't on the agenda, but we've got the Strategic Federal Affairs guys, they've came from a long ways. It may be possible to let them do their update and ship them out of here.
You bet. Under updates, we can do that?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I don't think we need to change, just add the update.
Okay, very good.
Okay, with the exception of that, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Citizens to be heard. Okay, updates, you're up.
Good evening, everybody.
Go right up then.
We're going to do this at half noon.
Thank you.
That's Robert Law. Thank you. My name's Robert Law and President of Strategic Federal Affairs. Just wanted to thank you for giving us the time to come on and kind of do an update and present, you know, things we've been working on, things we see in the future. There's so many things going on, it's hard to even categorize them all, but I brought a team of people with us to kind of report on different ones. We'll try to keep this brief, okay, but I think there's so many important issues that we can cover quickly that I think would be helpful, and then at the end, if there's questions, we can go from there. So, Bill, do you want to come up? Bill Bullard?
Well, thank you. Always a pleasure to be here. My job is to be up in Lansing every session day lobbying for monitoring legislation in the interest of St. Clair County. A lot of issues in the last six months, FOIA is a big issue, marijuana is a big issue. There's a couple of bills there that passed the House. They would give local opportunities to local communities to open up dispensing centers for medical marijuana. How many local communities want to do that? I don't know, but they may be given that choice. Dealing with Department of Health issues regarding your funding. Bill Kaufman just raised a couple of new issues today that we've been looking into. There's a new Michigan Supreme Court case, People versus Cunningham, where the Michigan Supreme Court ruled that a judge didn't have authority to impose a particular fine for conviction in a particular crime. That could have a huge impact on your circuit court as far as loss of revenues. The good news is that that was an interpretation of a statute, so there is a statutory fix available. The detail is yet to be determined. I've already reached out to Representative Lowery's office, and I know Senator Pablo has been informed. So that's something we're going to be working on in the fall. The other issue that Bill raised with us is the impending insolvency of the Federal Highway Trust Fund. And Ron DeCook and I are going to talk about road funding in the state of Michigan, but there's a similar situation happening nationally in that the Highway Trust Fund gets federal gas and diesel taxes. Since 2008, Congress has transferred $54 billion of general fund because the gas and diesel revenues are falling, and how could that be? It's because our fleet of vehicles is each year more and more fuel efficient. In fact, one statistic showed since 2007, the gasoline consumption in this country has declined by 6%. Now, probably part of that is the Great Recession, but a lot of it is just our cars are more fuel efficient. So, we're going to be talking to Congressman Miller's office on this. Speaker Boehner has been quoted in the papers that even if they can't come up with a long-term solution, they'll come up with a short-term fix, which I would assume be just put more money in the general fund, because the U.S. Secretary of Transportation has released a couple of charts that show that by the end of August, there'll be no money in that fund. The good news for Michigan is spokesman for MDOT has stated that even if payments from the federal government stopped out of the trust fund, that Michigan has enough monies to complete all the projects for this year, but it is a long-term problem. So those are two new issues we're going to be working on. Christine was good enough to hand out a little document that Ron and I prepared, "Road Funding Debate Rages in Legislature," and I'm going to give like an overview. This is an issue that'll be resolved in the lame duck issue. It'll be, there's three lame duck days in November, nine in December. The basic problem with road funding in Michigan is that Michigan is 48th, 49th, or 50th in spending on roads, and that has been historically true for the last 50 years or so. So people say, well, how can I, how can, you know, the road funding pot be so small because we're the fifth or sixth highest taxed gasoline tax state? And the simple answer is not all of the gasoline tax goes to roads. There's a sales tax on gasoline in the state, which we're one of the few states that have that sales tax on gasoline, and a number of other needs of the state are funded out of that gas tax. For example, in 1994, Proposal A added 2 cents to the sales tax for schools. Well, that 2 cents goes to schools by the Constitution, so there's nothing you can do about that. So what is the scope of the problem? The scope of the problem is that we need like a billion to 2 billion annually to fix our roads. Various estimates are 1.2 billion, 1.5 billion, just to maintain the roads as we are, but to improve roads, then how much do you want to spend? You want to spend 100 million, 200 million, 300 million, whatever it is. Ron is going to go into what happened the last couple of weeks and the failure to solve this problem, but there's only a couple of different ways you can raise that type of billion-dollar money. Theoretically, you could find the money in the general fund, cut spending elsewhere, but the general fund in Michigan is less than $10 billion. So to cut a billion or two out of schools, healthcare, health, other important needs, most observers just think is just not going to happen. The votes just aren't there. Traditionally, what Michigan has funded its roads by, two sources. The annual registration fee, which we used to call the weight tax, but now it's based on value, not on weight. That brings about half of our road monies. The other is the gasoline tax and diesel tax, fuel taxes. So Senator Richardville really tried in December, and I want Ron to come and take the ball from me, or the baton, in the couple of weeks in June to get a gas tax increase through. That effort failed, but most observers believe we are not going to solve our road funding deficit without an increase of some amount in the gas tax. The last time the gasoline tax was raised in Michigan was 1997, and it was only raised 4 cents. And I remember the debate because I was in the legislature, and most experts said, well, we need 8 or 10 or 12 cent increase to really fund our roads at that time, and the governor at that time said politically, we can only go as high as a 4 cent increase. So that's why we've been struggling ever since. And now Ron is going to tell you what the efforts were in the last...
Bill, before you jump down, just real quick, will you clear something for me? Clear up something for me? You said Michigan is 48th, 49th, or 50th in spending. How do you calculate that? Are you talking, you're not talking total spending, are you talking like per mile? I mean, obviously, you're looking at a state with more miles than, say, Connecticut would have or something like that, so how do they do that?
I think those figures are on a per-mile basis, correct, yes.
All right.
Yeah, Ron, do you want to jump in with Robert?
Technically, whether we're 48th or 45th, it doesn't matter. You know what I mean? It's the theory of it. We are way at the bottom in spending, and we're way at the top in money that we raise, and Bill's explained the conundrum there of why that is, all right? And people all have a hard time with that, and rightfully so. It's confusing. We're very fortunate in our firm, we have two people that, with all the road issues that are here and how they affect everybody. Congressman Joe Nolenberg, as many of you guys know, works with us, and he used to be the head of the Transportation Subcommittee for 10 years in Washington and dealt with this issue of the renewals that Ron's going to speak to. Ron was the Legislative Director at MDOT for 10 years before he came out in private practice and worked with us, so, and his tenure was fairly current up till, what, a couple of years ago? Yeah. And so he's very well-plugged into the nuances, the politics, the inner workings of what's going on, why they're happening, and it's just a really difficult situation, but this is one of the big issues that's going to affect counties and all the communities within the county. So, Ron?
We recently sent out to you our report on the two different plans that the House and Senate each had worked on. I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail on that, but I just want to give you kind of the politics of what was going on. And briefly, it's kind of like a repeat of Dickens, A Tale of Two Cities, only this is a tale of two plans. The House plan itself would raise $500 million. However, it would take 10 years to get to that $500 million level. The one plus of the plan, of both the House and Senate plans actually, is that they both advocated shifting from a pennies-per-gallon tax to a percentage tax on the wholesale price. That would be built in to allow for inflation, increases in fuel prices would bring more money into the state. It'd be a very, it would be minor, relatively speaking, as prices fluctuate. I'm not going to get into the details of how they would level it out, but it would be a fairly stable process, but it would get more revenue into the state coffers for transportation and be shared under the Act 51 formulas. The House plan, as I say, it would take 10 years to get to the 500 million. Unfortunately, the 500 million is way below what everybody recognizes as what is needed to at least maintain our road system, which is about $1.2 billion. That doesn't include our ability to expand it or improve upon it beyond, I guess, the 85, 90% capacity for good roads. The Senate version also had, as I said, the percentage tax instead of a pennies-per-gallon tax. It included the CTF for funding transit and rail programs, both freight and passenger. That was not included in the House version. And most importantly, it was a very robust, and I do mean robust, proposal. It would raise over a four-year period starting in 2015, about by the end of 2018, 2019, $2 billion. It would be a significant increase to the fuel tax. There would be a few changes made of registrations, but the majority of the $2 billion would come in from the increased sale, use tax on diesel fuel and gasoline, which by the way, both would be on the same level. It wouldn't be where it's 19 cents for gasoline like it is now and 15 cents for diesel fuel. It would both be at the same percentage that would be established under this new proposal by the Senate Majority Leader. So what really happened is the House passed their version, came over to the Senate, the Senate put in their own version, Senator Richardville, the Majority Leader put in his proposal, which was, as I say, very robust, but you had four factions basically in the Senate. Ironic, which is very ironic. You had one group of the senators that supported no tax increase whatsoever. It did not matter, they were not going to support a tax increase. You had another portion of the Senate that would not support the House version or the Senator Richardville version of the increased percentage, because, or any kind of percentage. They wanted to eliminate the gas tax, and they wanted to put a 2-cent tax, a sales tax addition on, and have that go before the public, and if the public passed that, that would be how we would fund our road system. It would be dedicated revenue in the Constitution. One cent of the sales tax raises about $1 billion. So that would raise roughly $2 billion under their proposal, which is similar to what Senate Majority Leader Richardville was proposing using the gas tax plan that he had. Then you had another group of legislators, senators, that did not support the sales tax, which included the Democrats, all the Democrats, and some Republicans, but would support Senator Richardsville's plan. And so, but that couldn't get you to, you know, the 20, 19, 20 votes that you needed. By the way, for the increase of the sales tax, you needed a 2/3 vote, and the Democrats were not supporting that, as I mentioned, so therefore you'd have to get all 26 Senate Republicans to vote for an increase in the sales tax, which, as I mentioned before, you had a core group of them, of them and the Democrats that did not support any sales tax increase. So that was gone off the table also. And finally, the other part of this whole thing was the Democrats were willing to support the Richardsville plan, but they wanted certain things in return. They wanted like the homestead property tax credit restored. They wanted the senior pension tax eliminated and instead put it back the way it was prior to the governor taking office. They felt they had leverage because they needed them for this vote, but unfortunately, as you know, with the contentiousness we've had over the last four years in the state and in Washington, that cooperation just wasn't there. So it ended up falling flat all the way around. Nobody could get a plan together that could gain enough, at least 19 votes that they would need, to pass something with the Lieutenant Governor being the tiebreaker for the 26 votes for the, to change the Constitution and add the 2 cents on the sales tax. That's what we're going to be facing again in lame duck in December, or after the election, November, December. I know there are still discussions going on between the Senate Democrats and the Governor's office and Senator Richardville's office, but they're kind of static at this point. I don't think they'll really get serious until after the election again. The danger there is they still can't come to an agreement on a plan that can get the votes needed to pass. We go into the next session, and of course, then we're back to reeducating people all over again, there are newbies coming in, and we start this whole thing one more time. But this will give you more of the details. If you have trouble sleeping, please read it. And then one other thing I'm working on is Amtrak just sent out, and I believe, Bill, you may have gotten this already, their qualifications list and requirements for moving, relocating the Amtrak station to the CN spot. I've talked with Paul Maxwell a little bit about that. I wanted to make you aware of it, so I'll be working on that project with, you know, with whoever's interested here in the county, plus the other parties in Amtrak and MDOT, and trying to serve as liaison to all that and help try and figure out how this can move forward. These projects are three to five years in length usually. They're very challenging. There'll be finance issues, funding issues, a lot of other hoops to jump through, but I'm, I think if you have the right approach to this, if the people work together and collaborate, which you seem to have a very, very tight group of people wanting to do that, we stand a very, very good chance of success at that.
Good.
Ron, your best take on this is that top, was it 5% or 10% that they take up for the rail and ferries and buses and mass transit? That, you think that's going to be included in there?
Oh, yes, it will be in the final package if there was one passed.
Whatever they put together, that piece will still be there.
Yes, the governor's very...
What was that before, 5 or 10?
It's, well, it's up to, the Constitution says up to 10%. No more than 10%. Right now, the average over the last several years has been about 8.5%.
Okay, that comes right off the top, and then everything else gets...
Yeah, so, and that will continue, which is very critical. And as I said, the governor is very strong on that. I worked as part of a coalition on this with public transit groups and others to get, try to get votes in the House for it, to get on the House plan. That was not successful, but it was a strong enough effort that it helped us with the Senate, and they included that in their package.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay. As you can see, these issues, they're getting more complicated by the day, and, you know, we're very fortunate to have the expertise, current expertise of the people that we do. Commissioner Bohm asked that we, in addition to specific things that we're working on, kind of give you an overview a little bit and the complexity, and we think we can have an impact, and obviously with Ron's input, he's a little modest. He's in the middle of this whole situation, trying to work it out, but we're, so we want to try to figure, help get something done, but there's lots of people that are working on it and coming from different directions. And our last presenter, John Kerr, who many of you know and have worked with, he works closely with the county administrator, Bill Kaufman, who does a great job, and they've had lots of interaction, lots of meetings, lots of projects that we're working on. And so, John, why don't you come up, go through some of the projects you're working on?
Good evening, Chairman Bohm. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, County Administrator Kaufman. My name's John Kerr, and my role with the firm is to provide assistance and support for our municipal clients in this place, in this case, St. Clair County, within economic development and other types of support services, grant writing, things like that. Often, I find that our interaction can be the result of a federal or state policy that has passed that impacts the county in one way or another and requires a response, or maybe it presents an opportunity, and I thought I could get into a few of those, but I wanted to make clear, you know, the services aren't strictly tied to simply writing a grant, but they could also include creative financing programs that are out there, one in particular, which is an opportunity I wanted to talk about this evening. But the other contribution we make goes towards the heart of what economic development is. It's not one person blazing a trail for a particular project. The most successful economic development stories, not just in this region, but nationally, are the results of collaboration. So it's maintaining good relationships with people like Dan Casey over at the St. Clair County EDA. I'm in regular contact with Dave Struck and others, maintaining a line of communication with Randy Myers over at the Community Foundation, because collectively, and you've seen it here, the projects that move forward, you know, the Blue Meat Screen in particular, you know, those nine initiatives are moving forward as the result of partnerships and collaboration. So our contribution to those efforts are to implement action items from those, maybe offer some other thoughts and creative ideas, make relationships where possible. And then the third thing is monitoring policy at the federal and state level that keeps St. Clair County informed. You heard about some of those today. My contribution are those policies that may have a direct impact on economic development in this region. One major one that resulted here recently, it actually was in the early part of June, was the EPA's draft rule on coal-fired power plants, the county having two here. Earlier this week, we submitted a report to Administrator Kaufman and Chairman Bohm, which can be distributed, that gives you an overall sense of, you know, some context and background to where this rule came from, what its intended purposes are. The proposed regulation would, the idea, the goal here is to cut carbon dioxide emissions from existing coal plants by up to 30% by the year 2030. Michigan would be required to reduce CO2 output by 32% from its 2012 levels. The concern, obviously, the obvious concern is jobs and the tax-based contribution by the two facilities that we have here in our own backyard. One thing that we've done up to this point is obviously we've prepared the report, we've kind of outlined the steps that we see things taking place as we move forward here. There is a draft rule that has been issued. Michigan will be required to provide a response to that rule by mid-October. It's SFA's recommendation that we assist and support the county in monitoring where that's headed, to make sure your contributions, your opinions are incorporated into the public record that the state of Michigan is going to be looking for. We've been in contact with officials at DTE. Our understanding is there's still a lot of internal analysis that's taking place as to the true impact that it'll have. I'd say on the positive side, the state of Michigan and even DTE, to a certain extent, and the other energy providers have done quite a bit to diversify how they provide energy to their customers. Michigan likes to say that they've already made quite a bit of inroads in the goal of reducing carbon dioxide emissions. So there are some out there that believe that we're on the right path moving forward here anyway, so that's something that we continue to monitor. The year 2015 will be devoted to furthering this effort until 2016, when the final rule is actually submitted. So this is an ongoing process. It's beginning. There's probably going to be some challenges to this, to this law, whether the EPA was even within their bounds to issue such regulation. There was some movement this week in the Supreme Court that kind of, some would say checked the EPA a little bit in terms of what their abilities are to regulate, but we are concerned, obviously, from a job standpoint, and the other things we can do, and one of the things, a few things we wanted to recommend, is that we also pay attention to how we would mitigate against, if this rule were to move forward in its current form, and looking at other ways to advance alternative energy concepts. If something like this were to take place, and let's say the worst comes to worst, and we do have closings of these power plants or people being laid off, there are labor groups out there that are already looking at job retraining efforts, and there's also other projects and initiatives that we could look at that would advance energy efficiency programs. The county has been identified as a PACE partner by the Lean and Green, which is a concept that would provide energy efficiency funding and financing for private companies, commercial and industrial facilities. Really, hasn't been a lot of PACE financing in the state of Michigan, so that's an opportunity. So it's looking at ways that we can leverage perhaps this regulation into positive ways, but it's important and it's something that we will continue to monitor. The second piece of, or the second program that I wanted to bring up, and again, a response to a federal regulation, is, you know, Congresswoman Miller, obviously everybody is aware, has been pivotal and so effective in helping get word legislation passed in Congress this past spring that helps provide funding and financing for our ports and harbors and some of the water infrastructure in the region. As part of that authorization, a new program has been created called the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. It's called WIFIAs the acronym. And again, it's administered by the Army Corps of Engineers, and the idea is to provide credit enhancement on the financings of water infrastructure improvements. So one of the recommendations we have is to allow SFA to continue to support the county in monitoring how this gets rolled out. It's a new program. I don't get the sense that a whole lot of people are super familiar with how it's going to be used. We have calls in place already to the Army Corps to figure out how we might be able to better leverage it for St. Clair County. They like to say, and this was a statement made by the Congressional Budget Office, that for every dollar authorized and appropriated for a WIFIA project, it'll support 33 times that amount in loans. So the idea is that the credit enhancement provided by the federal government is so strong, and water infrastructure financings are typically safer than others, that it should leverage a lot more from banks and underwriters that would allow us to accomplish some large-scale water infrastructure projects. So our recommendation would be to work with the Drain Commissioners Office and continue to work through Administrator Kaufman's office to see if it's something we can apply to challenges we have. I know that there's a draft capital improvement plan being circulated throughout the county right now. We're real interested to see the final result of that and to see how we can pair some of these programs with your capital improvement needs. So these are larger, higher elevation initiatives and efforts that we monitor from SFA's standpoint, and we look at federal and state opportunities that may not be everyday opportunities, but perhaps there are new programs we can bring to the table. The other big federal-led piece of legislation that was passed recently was the Farm Bill, and we are working with Senator Stabenow's office right now, actually, to orchestrate a meeting with the field representatives from the USDA here locally to figure out how we best can leverage some of these projects and programs. There was $300 million dedicated towards conservation efforts, a billion-dollar for research programs. So I know that's something that the county... research programs. So, I know that's something that the county's been looking at. And I know some of these programs are just reauthorized. But there's also some nuances, some new programs within that bill, that federal bill that was recently passed, that we want to make sure we're on top of, make sure the county's on top of, so that it can parlay that into other types of investments. So, those are, those are the big federal initiatives. The other few, real briefly, I want to mention a couple of real brief projects. The state of Michigan, talking about responding to a policy and applying it for economic development. The state of Michigan, as you know, has been providing the C-GAP grant opportunities, community grant assistance program grants, which encourages partnerships and collaborations amongst governmental units. I believe what came before you, within the last six months, there's been some discussion about the county's health department looking at the potential for efficiencies with its surrounding neighbors. These are grant applications that were available for studies and to see whether or not there's even the slightest chance of a feasible operation or feasible services that would fall under that. So, that is a grant program that we've applied for. We've been in discussions with county officials here about the St. Clair Inn. This is another Blue Meats Green project, a large regional initiative. And what better example of a regional partnership trying to carry a project forward than that? Our contribution to that effort is to provide some creative thought and ideas as it relates to financing and grant funding opportunities to leverage a reinvestment like that. So, that's just a flavor of a few of the projects that we've been working on. I think there's been a report distributed that outlines some other projects and some other grant opportunities. But we try to make ourselves available. We try to stay in regular communication with Administrator Kaufman. And Dave Struck is a point of contact for me as well. So, one thing I always encourage is if you have a project or if you're familiar with a project in your district that you want some attention paid to, please by all means, reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to come sit down with local officials and discuss opportunities at the state and federal level where we can leverage some of these creative financing opportunities. So, with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
Any, any questions?
I just want to give John a cheap plug here. He's in a lot of meetings that we have put together via, through our Blue Meats Green, which is, you know, the regional planning group. And I think you hit it on the head earlier, the collaboration, you know. I mean, county, different municipalities, our partners, Strategic Federal Affairs, ME-DC reps to, you know, from time to time, to really identifying these local and regional priorities. Because it's always unique what somebody brings to the table. When you're talking about a particular project, everybody has a little different knowledge of something. And that's really how you can get these projects done and move forward. Also, they are Marine Cities lobbyists. And I know the connection, Marine City's got a lot of really neat and unique things going on down there right now. And I think having the ability to not only know what direction the county's going in, to actually working with the city of Marine City's really had some, some good synergies down there. And we just recently saw a presentation from the city of Marine City. I know Bill Greitout was down there, really making some great strides down there. So, appreciate you having a seat at the table.
Thanks Chairman.
Thanks, John. Just one more thing in closing. What you see here are some of the key guys that you, that the county people run into on a regular basis. We have quite a few other people that do a lot of work with the county. They don't necessarily see in Lansing and other places. Dan Perrow, who a number of you have met, is our specialist with the administration. He was Governor Engler's former chief of staff and very, very effective. Kerry Roberts, who's working with us, is one of the outstanding developers in the, in the state over the last 30 years. That's been a huge addition for us because he comes at a, at development from a different perspective. He works closely with John, has a very, very good background. And as he gets more involved in some of the projects we're working on in economic development, we think that can be helpful. And Melissa Fazio, who a number of you know well, that's actually, has worked on the EPA project. So, we have quite a few others that are working on things that, that we're doing for the county. But I didn't want it to look like we're filibustering up here, so we, so we brought some of the key people.
Who's your historical guy? I hate to call him your historical guy. We've used him for, yeah.
Gary Robson.
He helped the city of St. Clair when we were working on some of the historical districts.
Yeah, Gary Robson.
Wealth of knowledge when it came to that particular program.
Yeah, he's the chair of his local historic district back in Franklin, Michigan.
Yeah, yeah. Very, very helpful on some of the things that they were trying to accomplish down there.
But in addition to that, the guy was literally one of the outstanding developers. Developed technology parks all over the southeast Michigan area, really a sharp guy. So, we have a lot of talent. We want to do everything we can. We've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with you. And I know when, when we started out, Bill and Jeff, we basically said we would try to become part of your team and not just, you know, an outside group that shows up when you call us. And we're, and we're still working at that. And we think we, we think we can even do better. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with you, so.
Yeah, I think we find tremendous value from the county's perspective in having you guys on board with us. I mean, we, to be quite frank, have done some other things with other people for different things over the past. And you guys are the sole survivor, so.
[laughing]
Good plug.
Very good. I, that was, that was very interesting.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And don't feel bashful about getting up and leaving either. You know, you can do that.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next conceptual initiatives. Anything? Okay, old business. New business, you have one, Area Aging on Aging 1B Annual Implementation Plan.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Amanda DeAngelo and I'm the manager of Compliance and Regulatory Performance for the Area Agency on Aging 1B. We obviously serve St. Clair County as well as five other counties in southeastern Michigan. And we represent and serve and advocate for adults, older adults, 16 and older, which is about 30, we represent 30% of the entire state's population for that. I'm here tonight to present to you our annual implementation plan, which you should have a copy of it. We go to all of our county commissions and ask for them, their approval of the plan, which does go to the Commission on Aging in September. We will be presenting it there. The plan basically outlines goals and objectives as part of our multi-year plan. Each year, we update it. And this is an update to our three-year plan, which implemented last fiscal year. What's important to point out is that the Area Agency on Aging funds and supports approximately $2 million worth of services to St. Clair County. The Council on Aging is one of our contractors. And we fund a variety of services that they provide to adults, older adults in your county. And your match to us is $15,800, which goes to support administrative functions with the Area Agency on Aging. So, you get quite a bit of bang for your buck, so to speak. As far as what we're looking into for next fiscal year, we're really excited. We have some additional funding revenue that's coming towards us through a Silver Key campaign. I'm not sure if you're aware of that specifically. But we've been successful in lobbying and saying we need more funding to serve older adults because more of them are seeking services. And the state has allocated additional funding. So, we are expecting approximately $1 million more next fiscal year to provide in-home services. So, that's home-delivered meals, chore, home injury control. In addition to that, we're also expecting to receive additional funding through the interstate funding formula, because the 2010 census has said more people have moved to our six counties over the last 10 years. So, we are expecting to start spending more money. And we haven't done that since 2008. So, we're very excited for that. And obviously, St. Clair County will benefit from that. As more older adults are expecting services, we are also looking at diversifying our revenue streams as well. We're looking at public and private partnerships all over our six-county service area. So, we're, we're really excited for what the future has for us, especially next fiscal year. So, in the plan itself, we outlined some of the things we're going to be doing. And I don't know if there are any questions. And I like to think that Commissioner serves on our Board of Directors, along with each of the other counties, have a representative as well.
Any questions?
I would move that we send the approval of Resolution 1431, approving the annual implementation plan of the Area Agency on 1B.
Support?
Moved and supported. Any other questions or discussion?
I don't think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator.
Thanks, Amanda, for coming up. Okay, do we have any other human services matters? For information only, June 2014 Health Department Points of Interest.
Just make a motion.
Support?
To receive and file it.
Moved and supported to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And receive and file packets.
No move.
Second?
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for adjournment.
No move.
Move, will you? Second.
We're a little thin on bodies tonight.
Okay.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Judiciary and Public Safety Committee. Would the clerk take the rule, please?
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tommy, and Commissioner Heidemann.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitout.
Here. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any citizens wishing to address the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting tonight? Hearing none. Any updates from administration? Nothing. Conceptual initiatives? Nothing. Old business, nothing. New business, nothing?
Actually, I guess, I guess one quick question for item under old business, or it could even be on our update. This would be for Bill. I know that we were going to be working on our 911 rewrite. You've got Tim Conger doing some of that. Have you?
Yes, Tim. Actually, Tim did prepare a draft. We've begun reviewing it and editing it internally. But it, given everything that's going on with the Convention Center and other projects right now, that's been kind of pushed back.
It wasn't a time, time-sensitive issue.
No, no, it wasn't. I believe it is something we did want to try and get taken care of in 2014. And I've seen a reason why we can't.
Good. Anything else? Under information only, you've got the St. Clair County E911 Technical Surcharge Pool Financial Statements, just for your review, gentlemen?
Yeah, I, I was kind of questioning that, Mr. Chair. They're, they're cutting that again?
Yeah, they're dropping it down another two or four cents, I believe. They dropped it last time. They're dropping it a little bit more. That money is money that goes directly to the different phone companies that provide the backup service needed for the 911 systems. And the audit merely looks at how that money gets distributed. And that money that they get is to support their end of the 911 system.
Okay. It won't impact our, our contribution?
Not at all. It actually doesn't really have anything to do with us whatsoever. It's more of an informational piece to say that they get a certain amount to help cover their overhead costs. And they're just informing us, really.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, we receive, what, 60 cents?
Currently, on our system, yes.
Yeah, okay. No, I don't want that hurt.
Okay. Want to receive and file this piece, then?
I, I move that we receive and file packets pertaining to judicial and public safety.
I'd support that.
Okay, motion and supported. And discussion on receiving and filing that particular piece? All in favor?
Aye.
Next. Move, will you adjourn?
Support.
All righty. And I will accept that. It's non-negotiable. But I do want to say that even though we didn't do any business here, the judiciary and public safety does work very hard. And we have a lot of things going on. And we bring them to you. It's just that we're in the middle of things right now. So, we are working. Motion is accepted. Meeting's adjourned.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take this role?
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tommy, and Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing, Commissioner Greitout.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann.
Here. Any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Greitout, supported by Commissioner Riley. Any citizens to be heard regarding these issues? Don't see any. Any updates from commissioners? Seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives from administration? No old business, new business. The Woodson County Park Michigan DEQ Grant Contract.
I would make that.
I see Mark here.
I would make that motion for final action this evening, since there's no.
Is this for final action tonight?
Yeah, there's no match for it.
Okay, support.
And then Mark can, want to talk a little bit about it, Mark? Just say, maybe a little bit of the background, just because I had the Times Herald and the radio had called me regarding on it. You know it better than I do.
Couple of years ago, we were contacted by DNR Fisheries Biologists and indicated that the DNR staff was recommending that the DEQ consider reinvesting some of the fine and penalties assessed to a upstream farmer to be used for improvements at Woodson County Park, specifically canoe and kayak launch and string bank restoration work. Over the course of the last couple of years, we've been in contact with DEQ staff and DNR staff. And in that same period of time, we worked with a, a senior product, a project team from MSU's Department of Landscape Architecture to do a, a plan for improvements to Woodson County Park. So, the results of that senior project was used to create a budget and submit to the DEQ for the work plan that is now part of this grant contract. The work would involve both the use of contractors, the purchase of a canoe and kayak launch, and paying for staff time to do some of the improvements. So, we have, over the years, gotten a lot of comments and suggestions to get a canoe and kayak launch installed at Woodson, particularly. Folks have indicated that folks launching up at an M136 in Barrett's Hill, it's a long, long paddle down to the next public access in the Wadams area. So, there's a lot of advocates that are just waiting to be able to use the launch. This work will not include the ADA route all the way down to the launch. If you've ever been out to the property that was formerly the Girl Scout camp, it's a huge elevation change. We'll, we'll have to undertake that project separate from the launch. But we will be able to get able-bodied folks down there with their canoes or kayaks and get launched. Most of the paddlers say they'll choose to launch there because it's easier to carry their canoe and kayak down the hill than to carry the canoe or kayak back up the hill. So, we're, it's really gratifying to have the DNR Fisheries people come to us and say, hey, we've suggested this kind of unique funding source for improvements for the county park. So, with your approval tonight, we'll move forward and get the launch ordered and get the final design work done. And hopefully, get the launch in this fall, or if that doesn't work out, first thing next year after the high water.
Well, just one comment. I think this indicates how important it is to be really tenacious on following up on these things. And you are to be commended for, you know, keeping on top of this for, what, three years?
Right, right.
And.
And sometimes these contacts are made just by, you know, the Bell River Watershed Committee that I'm on. And you develop relationships with some of these state staff people. And they, it comes, they're, they're, this is an obvious. and it comes, this is obviously a direct benefit of their knowledge of what we're doing and confidence that we can invest these funds and make something really positive for the county.
Now, you kept on top for that. You should be commended.
Yeah, just to add to what he has to say about being a good steward of money, actually, myself, Bill Kaufman, the new city manager in Port Aaron, and a couple others from Port Aaron, had a meeting with the DNR DEQ today over in Lansing. That's where we were this morning, to talk about some trust funds and possibilities here. And that was very clear that they felt very good about what we've done with our funding and stuff over here. So that's important.
Yeah.
Big time, so.
Okay, I guess I can call a vote on that. I don't think we need roll call. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carried unanimously. The waste brokerage agreement with Intertek Landfill. Matt?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
Before you do this evening is an agreement with a firm called Intertek Incorporated, who I'm proposing for us to use as a brokerage entity for Canadian solid waste shipments to Smith Creek landfill. The basis of the agreement is that the company would have exclusive brokerage rights in Ontario and would be reimbursed for loads coming to our landfill at the rate of fifty cents per ton. The company actually has been working quite hard here this year to solicit and track some waste streams, and we're to the point now where we're accepting about five loads per day from across the river. And that's starting, and that number has been slowly growing since springtime, and it's starting to have a significant impact on our overall revenue. So I think we're gaining some traction, and this agreement with this company will formalize that relationship.
Having said that, the kind of waste material that comes in, is this highly biodegradable, so that it can be readily used by the bioreactor?
In general, those are the waste streams that we're targeting. High organic content waste streams and less of the construction and demolition-type debris. We're doing business with a couple of transfer stations, and there is some mix of the CND with the residential type, what they call in Canada wet waste. But the vast majority of what comes in is the high organic content waste that we've been targeting.
And I just wanted to emphasize that, Howard, that they are looking for particular waste streams that are coming. I mean, we've talked at length as far as our volumes being declined from 2003, where we were in the 360,000-ton neighborhood, to where we're at today, roughly 170,000. We were looking to backfill some of those volumes with high, you know, highly biodegradable materials that essentially helps a bioreactor, which helps produce our methane, which helps produce electricity. So we're just not opening the floodgates, so to speak.
Correct.
And, I mean, we, five trucks a day, I think collectively, we've said somewhere and up to maybe twelve trucks per day would be a target number for us. I just want to emphasize, too, the volume of truck traffic today is nowhere even near what it was back. We have all the traffic counts from MDOT, or I'm sorry, from the St. Clair County Road Commission. So this additional truck volume per day is not even remotely close to where it was at at one time. And when we made this decision to move down this path, I think we should, you know, take in a position that we're looking to, if we do anything, we're looking to get back to the volumes that we had seen in the past. It's not like we're turning this into, you know, free-for-all, call it whatever you want, so.
And if I could just make a comment about the truck traffic portion of what Commissioner Bohm mentioned there. We handle about 150 customers on average daily, and the vast majority of those are truck traffic: roll-offs, front load, rear loads, some transfer trailers. Admittedly, the Canadian loads coming in are in the large transfer trailers, but they've got multiple axles. They're subject to the same load and weight restrictions that vehicles inside the county are. So the increase in truck traffic is actually quite minimal when you look at it from the overall traffic perspective.
Hence, they got a brand-new road from Wadams to Smith Creek, which is a lot nicer, a lot nicer road than they ever had back in 2003, when they were running up and down it, so.
Okay, I would entertain a motion at this time that the waste brokerage agreement with Intertek Landfill be presented. Okay, now this will go to the board, and we have an opt-out position in here, what, sixty days' notice?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other discussion?
You need a second?
Yes, we do.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Bohm. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carried. Thank you. We'll take that up at the regular board meeting. The Smith Creek landfill natural gas conversion for final action. I assume that's Mr. Riley's?
Yes, you want to touch on that?
Well, let me start, and you can jump in.
You want to make the motion and-
I will make the motion that we place natural gas from SEMCO Energy Gas Company, run main and services on the property at, for three meter locations.
For final action?
For final action tonight.
I'll support it. Okay, now, Matt, if you could fill us in on the details.
Well, I give all credit to Commissioner Riley for this initiative. He was visiting the landfill with a constituent about a month ago, and we're walking around and talking and looking, and he noticed the several propane tanks we have at the facility for various of the buildings we have, and was wondering why we weren't on natural gas. And I didn't frankly have a good answer for him, other than I had a misconception about the natural gas line out on Smith Creek Road. As it turns out, that main is a service main and not simply a transmission line. And Commissioner Riley has worked very hard to speed this process along, put me in contact with the SEMCO folks, worked up estimates. And with your approval of this initiative tonight, we're hopeful to have that service installed, our equipment retrofitted for the different type of fuel by fall, in time for the winter heating months, so.
Correct.
One note, real quickly, if I can. I have a figure in this memorandum of $13,121.89. That number has actually changed slightly since I wrote this. And what is that number, Commissioner?
Yeah, we actually ran the main a little further for potential use in another area, and that total number will be $13,303.71 total installation cost.
Well, the other thing, that we're obviously having to put some upfront cost here, but what's the potential saving annually on fuel cost?
Fuel costs, if you had the same type, and Matt and I went over these numbers, and the company ran all the numbers for us, you're looking at, once we get everything paid back, we figured roughly almost about a two-year payback to pay everything back.
That's a pretty good return on investment.
Yeah, it is. And if you, I don't want to see a cold winter, but if you had a cold winter, it'd be better. But the other side is that it'll be a third the cost going forward after the payback is there.
So we're talking about six, $7,000 a year savings?
That's correct.
Yeah, about $7,000.
Excellent. Any other discussion? Seeing none? I think because we better have, no, it's going to full.
No, this is final action.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on this?
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitout?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Thanks, Matt, very much.
The Park and Rec Commission alternate appointment for District Six and Seven. I assume that's Mr. Greitout's?
Yeah, I would make the motion that we approve Cindy Babish for the alternate position for Terry Wallace. Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just would like to say that I've known Cindy a long time. She headed up the Downriver Parks and Recreation Commission for a long time. Did a super job bringing it from a baby stage up to something that really served the entire Downriver area very well, and probably would still be doing it had there not been budget cuts down that way by the cities and the townships that forced the closure of that particular event. So I think she'll be a great addition to the Parks and Recs as needed if Mr. Wallace can't make his meetings.
Excellent. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carried. The Smith Creek landfill activities report?
Make the motion.
Okay, there's a motion to accept and file the Smith Creek landfill activities report. Any discussion regarding that report? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carried. Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none? Information only? The Park and Recreation financial documents for the Park and Rec Financial Committee meeting minutes, the M-Bridge construction update, the Road Commission letter?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion has been made to receive and file the information only.
Support?
All in favor, supported by Commissioner Greitout. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carried. These items will be filed. Receive and file packet?
So moved.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Riley. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
We are adjourned.
Yeah, that's right. We're going to open up the Ways and Means meeting, please. Roll call.
Commissioner Semasko, Commissioner Tamiyan, Commissioner Heideman.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing, Commissioner Greitout.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Do I have a motion? There's no additions or deletions. Do I have a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Any citizens to be heard at this time regarding Ways and Means? Seeing none. Item number four, we did that earlier, conceptual initiatives. Any conceptual initiatives? Item six, old business, old business. Item number seven, item eight, the landfill manning restructure. Got man here.
On your agenda packets is a memorandum of author describing some proposed changes to our landfill office staffing. There's two basic issues with current staffing levels. The first being is that over the years, in recent years, we've done a lot of things to streamline our expenses. We've taken on more duties within the office that formerly were being taken care of by our consultants. We've internalized some of those functions. We've got a Canadian waste stream now, which requires a bit of a different handling from an accounting and management standpoint. And things just seem to be a bit busier with everything going on. So our internal functions have gotten larger and more complex, and at the same time, we have an issue with being frankly shorthanded when one of my employees goes on vacation or has to take sick days. We end up accruing overtime, and this is explained in the memo, due to our extended working hours at the landfill, we're six days a week, and extended hours during the weekdays from a normal seven-and-a-half or eight-hour workday. So there's three things that I'm proposing to alleviate these issues and make us more efficient, both financially and as an organization. The first is to create a new position of office manager, and at the same time, eliminate our senior landfill attendant-two position. Secondly, changing our account clerk-two position from a full-time status to a part-time status. And third, adding one additional new position, a landfill attendant-one, part-time. Just a couple notes. I discuss all of those in some detail in the memo. Our account clerk is actually retiring at the end of the year, and the senior staff and I sat down and looked at that and how we were going to handle duties moving forward, and took this as an opportunity to kind of reassess everything. And you can see from the two tables on the second page is that our overall weekly or annual labor cost with fringes included actually reduced by about $8,000. But the hours we're able to staff on a weekly basis on straight time increased by eight hours per week. So the addition of that fifth person gives me a lot of flexibility to ensure that we can minimize our overtime and spread our workload a bit, so. And I do have, just one last thing to mention, I do have a couple special requests in there. I am asking that the start date for the new account clerk-two position be December 1st, 2014, which is one month prior to retirement of the person occupying the current position. I'd like that overlap to have a good turnover time, get someone up to speed on our very landfill-specific accounting systems and procedures, if we can. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll support it.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Go ahead. Just anybody?
The only comment I would have is, I mean, when you can add staff, get more done, and yet do it for less money, I don't know how I can vote no on something like that.
Oh, then you could find a way.
I could find a way, but I wouldn't do it.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item B, 2014 general fund adjustments.
Make a motion, we send it to the full board?
Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Manning table changes, human resources.
Bill, you want to get a little background on this, or is there somebody that's going to speak?
I'll just give you a quick background. I put a lot of details in the memo there. I think the bottom line is, in 2009, when we started making cuts to our budgets, there was some very significant sacrifices made by central administration. The result of that has been a backlog of work, not just in the HR department, but in many other areas. I've come to you over the last year, year and a half, with a number of proposals for restructuring and reorganizing some departments in order to try and keep up with that workload. One of the things that I point out in my memo to you is that there was a very significant reduction in staffing levels as well as funding or expenditures within the HR department. In 2009, their wages and benefits totaled about a little over half a million dollars, $503,000. In 2014, they're down to $191,000. And I think you can envision what that means to the staffing level within the department and their ability to keep up with the workload. Although our agency has, the county as a whole, has not been adding a great deal of additional staff, our staffing level has remained fairly level compared to what it was in 2009. We have added certainly more part-time employees, and the needs and the requirements of our employees and their dependents employees and their dependents have become a little bit more sophisticated. There's more information that they're requesting from the department. Our negotiations with labor unions continue to get more complicated as we go along. The compliance with the Affordable Care Act and the reporting that will be necessary will create a very significant burden on the existing staff, and as a result, we are requesting that we add one full-time staff member to the HR department. Their primary tasks will be addressing payroll issues associated with new hires, as well as working with all the payroll delegates from each of the departments. They also will be doing some work in the area of workers' compensation to assist with that. A portion of the wages and benefits will be charged to the workers' comp fund, an amount certainly equal to the work that they'll be doing in that area. The balance of that would be charged back to the general fund. Administration is proposing that we use a portion of our budget incentive funds to cover those costs. So our recommendation is that we add one full-time staff person to the HR department at this time.
I would, I would move that we do that. Support?
Second, I'm sorry. My fault, can't do that. Trying to follow on my little tablet deal, and I'm not doing a good job with it, so. I'm practicing both.
Need some lessons?
Computer for dummies. All in favor?
Aye.
Item D, the Resolution 1432 for the collective bargaining agreement.
I would move that Resolution 1432 with the Communications POAM Union be passed?
Support.
Actually, the word I want is extension.
Gary, you want to talk on, please?
Yeah, we got, we had negotiations for a re-opener with these groups. For whatever reason, unlike every other group in the county, their contract expires June 30th instead of December 31st, so they're not in line with the county fiscal year. Nobody really knows why that exists or how it ever happened, it doesn't make any sense. So when we did a re-opener with them, since we don't have a budget to look at for next year, we suggested that they just push all of these law enforcement-type contracts out to December 31st. They agreed, it's better for us, better for them, and if you want, you can just do all of them in one motion because they're all the same thing, just modifying the cap.
If that's okay with the chair, I would move that Resolutions 1432, 33, 34, 35, and 36 all be moved simultaneously?
That's support.
That's okay with the second?
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, other Ways and Means matters. Number nine, information only, about receive and file.
I move we receive and file packets regarding-
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.